Ladies and gentlemen, would you...
Are we on?
Good, Mark? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I restand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce one of our Lackawanna County Assessors Office, one of our employees, Tim. Tim, would you please come up to the podium? Tim is a veteran. Tim Booth, who served in the Pennsylvania National Guard and the 1st Battalion, 109th Infantry, and achieved the rank of Major, and served two doors of duty in Germany after 9/11 and in Iraq. Tim is a recipient of the Bronze Star, Global War in Terrorism Medal, the Combat Infantry Medal, the Iraq Campaign Medal, just to name a few. Tim, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you. If you raise your right hand, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Illinois State Police Trooper Christopher Lambert was struck and killed by a vehicle while doing an investigation. Brigham Han Police Department, Alabama, Sergeant Wartash Carter was shot and killed as another officer attempted to arrest two men who were breaking into vehicles. Mobile Police Department, Alabama, Police Officer Sean Tudor was shot and killed as he and several officers were attempting to serve arrest warrants. Please keep our law enforcement, our heroes, and our thoughts and prayers, and their families and friends at this horrible time in their lives. I'd like to bring this Board of Commissioners a meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Our proclamation presentation, the small business cannot make it today, they're having an issue with some electrical problems, so they will be back on the agenda within the next two weeks. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Resolutions 19-0031.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 275849 through 276518 inclusive totaling $3,822,395.96, and electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling $7,337,619.84.
Controller DeBilio, how's everything going?
Everything's going good, Commissioners. All invoices are in order, and there are no invoices related to the probe at the prison for this month.
Okay, great.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure.
I'd like to thank Gary for all your work. You're a tremendous asset to the county, so kudos on keeping up with everything. I appreciate it. And your staff, your entire staff, you do a great job.
Thanks so much, and my staff is wonderful.
Yes.
And they're behind me all the way. Thanks.
Good. It's good to have a good staff. I'd like to make a motion to approve current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 19-0028.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for Marywood University, whereas Marywood University proposes infrastructure improvement initiatives, replacement of the heating and cooling systems in the Seta La Vergeta Center for the Performing Arts and the Learning Commons, as well as an upgrade to Windows Atleti Center located at 2300 Adams Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source to finance the project, and whereas Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. Now therefore be it resolved that Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $3,950,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for your redevelopment assistance capital grant for the project. And here to address the board is...Sandy's not here? Sandy Upshinsky is not here this morning, but this is a...it's an application on behalf of Marywood for RACP funds in the amount of $3,950,000, Commissioners.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the filing of redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for Marywood University. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 19-0029.
This is a resolution, Commissioners, authorizing the filing of another redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the Southside Women's Business Incubator Project, whereas the Southside Women's Business Incubator Project entails design, construction, infrastructure, and other related costs of an acquired property at 526 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, into a new business incubator and office space. And whereas the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania, UNC, is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital programming funds as a source to finance the project, and whereas the UNC desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and whereas the UNC hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment capital program funds. Now therefore be it resolved that Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $2 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment capital assistance program funding.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for the Southside Women's Business Incubator Project. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
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 This is a resolution awarding an inmate commissary services agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award and enters into an inmate commissary services agreement with Oasis Management Systems, Inc., to commence immediately for an initial term of three years. And here to address the board on it is the Warden, Tim Betty. Tim?
Hey, Warden, how are you?
Hi, Warden.
Good morning. How is everyone today?
Good. How are you?
Just to point it out, the prison board and the Board of Commissioners previously approved moving forward with entering into a contract with Oasis to provide the commissary. It's been several months, but we have a final contract that's now been signed off. One little change that is going to be in an amendment is the liability insurance. We're going to request an additional $1 million. Right now, it's at $1 million, but I'm still seeking the board's signature on this, and then we'll get an amendment for the insurance issue.
Okay. Does the Board have any other questions for Warden Betty?
Commissioner, we would just...that the motion to approve this be contingent upon we're going to make a correction to the insurance amount. We're going to increase that, I believe, to 3 million. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, at the recommendation of our Risk Management Director, Rick Jones.
Okay, Rick, okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion awarding the inmate commissary service agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. 19-...thank you, Warden. 19-0033.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a motion to award the Lackawanna County Courthouse Sidewalks Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Spanel Construction, Inc., for the amount of $830,000. Here to address the board is the County Engineer, Gary Cavill. Gary?
Good morning, Commissioners. We received six bids to replace all of the sidewalks around the courthouse. We're looking to try to start this in the spring right now. We had the lowest bid with Spanel Construction at $830,000. It was already allotted in the budget. It came in underbid, so we'd like to get it moving.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions?
Just on the guarantee on that, do we have some kind of...
Commissioner, there's a one-year guarantee normally. If you want to add additional, I'm sure we can.
I asked them to look into any type of contingency so we can have...go a little bit further because...
After it's totally complete and we sign off on it, that everything...our punch list is done. It's one year after that, that's the standard construction guarantee. If we want to add more, though, we can do that. It's just going to be additional funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion awarding Lackawanna County Courthouse sidewalk projects to the lowest responsible bidder, Spanel Construction, at $830,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, I would just like to say that this is something that we've been waiting for for a long time. Our courthouse, the four blocks that surround it, is a showcase area. We do so many things for veterans, arts, LaFesta, there's just so many different events, Flag Day, you name it. It's a cornerstone of Lackawanna County, and these sidewalks, last time out, they're disintegrating. And this time, we want to make sure that this investment on behalf of the citizens is absolutely as perfect as it possibly can be, and make sure, like you said, like we have a beautiful courthouse, we have a lot of monuments honoring great things that have happened in Lackawanna County, and great citizens across our country, and great veterans. And the one thing that we always lacked was our sidewalks, and our maintenance people go out every year and they patch them, and they do a really great job, and it takes them a while. There's a lot of little holes that get reopened up with the salt and stuff through the winter and anything else they utilize on sidewalks. These sidewalks, when they're in, are going to be magnificent because it's the only thing that the courthouse was missing for the last so many years. Because as long as I've been a Commissioner, this has been going on, and we finally have the resources to make sure this happens with the capital improvements, and I think it really matters to the citizens. So, at this time, I'd like to...as for roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Gary. Opportunity for the public to address the board?
Joan Hodewannett, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. Well, gentlemen and lady, the last time we met, I seem to have been chided for constantly bringing up the issue of the legal fees with regard to the Lackawanna County prison probe. So I went home, I licked my wounds, and I decided I'm not going to change a damn thing. So you may have read yesterday's Sunday Times, or maybe you didn't. And on page one, Lackawanna County Prison Probe: Pay a Heavy Price. Suspended Guards' Salaries: Legal Bills Cost $1.45 Million. That's $761,833 in salaries paid to nine guards who were placed on paid leave. That's as of the end of January. And $691,891 in legal fees paid to law firms representing the county in the ongoing statewide grand jury probe into sexual abuse. And possibly these figures will rise. In fact, they most likely will. Now, I'm not accusing any Commissioner, any prison official, any prison guard, or any public employee of wrongdoing. These are allegations, and they will go through the process because we're a nation of laws, hopefully. But when you look back on the track record of the prison, and I'm just looking back 20 years because that's when I came back to Scranton, one has to take pause because this is not the first allegation to arise. So I think that the best oversight of government operations is the local citizenry. They should be concerned that $1.45 million, which could be used for sidewalks, or bridges, or roads, or other services, is going into a thing like this. And even if every one of these nine guards are exonerated, that money is not coming back, is it? So that's why I'm going to raise the issue. I'm going to raise the issue at every meeting I attend, and if you don't like it, tough bananas. Okay. Enough about that. I do want to compliment Tom Durkin, who is taking a careful look at what happened with that $3,800 tax lien, and is putting into place effective internal control so that the same thing doesn't happen in the future. And that's how the system is supposed to work. Things go wrong. You have software upgrades and the computer goes wacko. And how many of us have...how many times have you downloaded a patch on your PC or your laptop and your computer, you know, committed software suicide? It happens, okay? But he's done the right thing. The issue came to his attention, and he's finding out why it happened, and he's doing the things to make sure it doesn't happen a second time. That's the way the system is supposed to work. You've got a good chief financial officer. Okay. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to go out on First Friday in Scranton up to the marketplace at Steamtown where there was an excellent...an excellent presentation on Black History in Scranton. You may or may not have heard of Glennis Johns. She's now a resident of Scranton, and she teaches sociology at St. John's University in Queens. Glennis has taken it upon herself to research the history of the African-American community in Scranton and, of course, neighboring communities. And she presented a wonderful, wonderful capsule of the good and the bad of the last 100 years or so of the African-American community in Scranton. I think most people who have lived here in Scranton, well, I'm 69, you can remember, you know, how most of the African-Americans lived in the downtown courts and alleys, and most of the housing that they had over the last 100 years was what you would euphemistically call substandard, and how most of the jobs that they could get were menial and very low-paying. You know, a lot of that's changed over the years, thank God. But she also told us about local personalities that contributed to the community. People like George Brown and his wife Louise, who in 1882 opened the largest trucking company...this was drawn by horses, by the way, largest trucking company in eastern Pennsylvania. And there were people like Lincoln Tillman, who became Scranton's first black firefighter and served the community for 52 years. There are people like George Jones, who became the first black mail carrier in 1894, when very few African-Americans anywhere in the country could read and write, and you had to read and write to be a mail carrier. So she shared all those stories with us. She showed us both the positive and the negative. That same night, in the Library Express, was a book signing. A woman, Sandra Burgett Miller, wrote this book. It's called Tell 'Em. Now, her family's been in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 100 years, and she would ask her relatives, "Well, where did our family come from? You know, tell me about the family." And they would simply say, "Oh, we came from Waverly, Waverly, Pennsylvania," which, you know, is a largely white community. So she did her own research. And she found out that her great-great-grandfather, Thomas Burgett, who was a slave, ran away in 1848 and rode the Underground Railroad, and he got off at Waverly, where the residents welcomed him and other fugitive slaves with open arms. And we should be very proud of the history that Waverly, Pennsylvania has in playing that role on the Underground Railroad. So I'm simply telling you that if you have not looked into Black History Month locally this year, you should. We all know about people like Martin Luther King Jr. and Rosa Parks, and Malcolm X and Stokely Carmichael, these national figures that you hear about every year. But how many of us know about the local personalities who shaped Scranton and northeastern Pennsylvania? I didn't. So please, if you have the opportunity, you can go on to blackscranton.com/events and find out how you can, you know, hear Glennis Johns' presentation, or go over to the Library Express bookstore and pick up a copy of Tell 'Em. By the way, she put this in...she converted this book into a play. The play's going to be presented at the Scranton Cultural Center on Friday and Saturday night, if you want to see the play, the story of how her ancestor came to northeastern Pennsylvania. These are the kinds of things that we need to share with our children as they're growing up. So hopefully, you will all look at that. And one other thing that's coming up this Saturday, the Albright Memorial Library, my favorite, and the Grand Army of the Republic Museum are presenting a special Presidents' Day project, Abe Lincoln, Saturday, 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. in the Henkel Room of the Scranton Public Library. That's on the second floor of the Scranton Public Library, corner of Vina North Washington. They're going to have an actor who's going to be dressed as Abraham Lincoln. They're going to have WWII artifacts from the G.A.R. Museum. They're going to have the dearly departed players from Dunmore. If you've never seen them, they give a presentation every October at the Dunmore Cemetery about local personalities. And it's a wonderful opportunity for parents to take their children to learn about the local history of the Civil War era in northeastern Pennsylvania. So I hope I'll see you all there. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. Donnie, you want to explain about our prison bills a little bit about, you know, I mean, just a quick combination of what they...what the detail is that how we, you know, someone...if they're not arrested and there's suspicion that they're not fired and they put them on leave, can you just go over...
When the allegations first arose, Commissioner, the...we put the prison guards on...we suspended them, of course, pending investigation into the allegations. Evidently, if they were true, the allegations were true, we couldn't have them in the prison. But again, if they were false, you know, we would have to bring them back to work, and the decision was made at that time to pay...put them on paid administrative leave until we can get to the bottom of the allegations if they were true or not true. The reason for that is evidently if we suspended them without pay and they ended up coming back, we would have to pay them anyway. Plus, we'd have to pay them back back time, plus whatever else goes along with that. So they've been on paid administrative leave ever since that time. Those that have been charged criminally have been fired. They've been terminated. We do not pay for legal fees for their criminal charges. That's not something the county does. We only pay for them...those that were subpoenaed to appear before the grand jury who are employees of the county, we did provide them with legal counsel. We're required to do that, and we did do that, just for their appearance before the grand jury related to the investigation. Again, if anyone was charged, that immediately terminated. Any representation from the county terminated. They have to get their own criminal attorney. We don't pay for criminal lawyers for criminal charges. The guards are currently...four guards who are still on administrative leave because, one, they have not been cleared by the Attorney General's Office at this point, nor have they been charged. So they're kind of in limbo. And we're kind of in limbo with them because, you know, do we bring them back, and then if they get charged, you know, could they do something while they're back in the prison? It creates a situation for us. Then again, if they are not charged, you know, they're free at that point to bring them back. I've asked our counsel, who has been liaising with the Attorney General's Office last week, to get in touch with the AG and C if we can get some kind of clarification as to their status, but we haven't heard back at this point regarding that.
Can we explain the other part, too, that when they came in...well, we've got to...I'm putting the...
The legal bills?
Putting the horse before the cart, really, the court before the horse. Now, who asked...who asked for them to come in here?
We require...once we'd received the allegations through the lawsuit filed by the Comerford Law Firm, we then inquired...we sent a letter to the District Attorney asking him to investigate. The District Attorney determined there was a conflict of interest, and he referred it to the Attorney General's Office.
So we asked for this?
We sent the letter, yes, yes. I actually sent the letter on your behalf, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners at that time, saying we're requesting an investigation into these allegations at the prison.
Okay. Now that we did that, now...so they come in and they take a lot of evidence. Explain the evidence, how much that was.
Well, they came in with a...
The mails and just so...
They came in with a search warrant, and they seized basically the entire email system for the county. That included not only items related to the prison, but confidential information from Area Agency on Aging, Children and Youth Services, and other agencies within the county that really were outside the scope of their investigation. At that point, we had determined that...
It was about their privacy.
At that point, we determined that the county needed to protect our interests and the residents' interests and our clients' interests with regard to confidential information. So we proceeded to regain counsel to do that before the grand jury and also here in Lackawanna County.
Now, when you're employed, like for the county in general, and as a corrections officer or anybody that's employed at jail, or basically anyone in Lackawanna County, do we do background checks?
Yes.
Thorough background checks?
Well, we take the applications, Commissioner, and we do a criminal background check on them. Yes, yes.
So they're criminally cleared?
That's correct.
They're cleared to come to work for us?
Correct. We also do a drug test on them, too.
And drug tests. Okay. But I just wanted to clarify that we asked for the investigation, and this is what came with it, and that, you know, when you hire someone, you know, you do your background checks, you do your due diligence, and you don't know. Like, my grandmother used to say, "The only person that really knows what somebody's thinking is yourself." You know what you're thinking. So, you know, you can interview, you can do background checks, you're not sure, you know? And the environment is a different type of environment in a prison, and I would just hope that we have no further issues. And, you know, we want our prison to be as safe as it possibly can for anybody that has to go out there, and that works for our employees and the inmates that are out there. So I just wanted for Don to clarify everything that's been going on and let it be known that we are the ones that asked for the investigation. It wasn't that they came to investigate us. We asked to be checked into to make sure that everything was on the up and up. So, thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, and I'd just like to remark on Joan's commentary because there was not...that was not an intention against you. It was an intention against what was reported because it was reported that there was three government entities under investigation, including the county, the city, and the school district. We are not. We, as a board, are not under investigation. It's clarified now. That was my bone of contention because they even showed a picture of our building on the news. So I was...I didn't feel that that was accurate. And it is corrected. It's in here, official's note. "County did not provide legal representation to individuals charged with the crime, and Commissioners are not under criminal investigation." That was my...that was what I was upset about, that that was being...we were being lumped in with the city of Scranton and what was happening with them, when we are not. We are not the same at all. And just because we're physically located here, we have absolutely nothing to do with what's going on with them, and I just didn't feel that they should have lumped us all together like that. So that was my point, Joan. I love you coming in here and talking. I have no problem with that, and the more people that do it, the better that government will be. So thank you for that. That's about all I have to say, and I'm just glad that that was clarified. Thank you, Donnie. I would just like to thank Representative Marty Flynn, who had a seminar this past weekend that I attended on medical marijuana. They were very, you know, they were very accommodating to my questions, and I do appreciate that, however, you know. So I just want to make sure that Representative Marty Flynn has my note of thanks for bringing the topic to our area to give some pretty accurate information, and also, he'll know just a special thanks to him for other reasons, so he'll know what that's about. And also, the Pro-Life Breakfast was this past weekend, and it was very well-attended. It was a great event, and I don't know if it was reported on or not, so I just wanted to make sure I give a shout-out to Helen Gozer for her work and the Pennsylvania Humans for Life for all the work that they do, especially in light of what's happening out in New York City, which, in my opinion, is an absolute disgrace. And, you know, I just...I would hope that somehow that gets overturned out there. It's just terrible to have an abortion right as the baby's being born is just outrageous. I don't know what's happening in this world, but God help us because if that's the trajectory we're moving on, I have no idea what the future holds for this country. So that's about all I have. Thank you very much, and I hope everyone has a great week because I will be going on vacation, so.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Joan, I did read that book. It is very interesting, and I think it's something that's well worthwhile for people to read. The grandmother, Edna, brought a copy up to me, and I have it upstairs, and if anybody would like to read it, they're more than welcome. Thank you.
I, too, would also like to bring up that we were at the book signing at the Historical Society, I know, about a month ago. And what a great individual, she brought so much to the community. It's amazing. I'd just like to just remind everybody, you know, when snow starts coming again, that we're going to be having sleigh riding at McDade Park. It's free. And just... we're going to be having sleigh riding at McDade Park. It's free. And just remind everyone that Valentine's Day has come up around the corner, so get your loved ones their candy, their flowers, their cards, and all that good stuff. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe...excuse me, happy and safe Valentine's Day, you know, for all those guys and girls out there, to make sure that they get their loved ones the candy and all the good things that they like to get for Valentine's Day. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice. Thank you.